Comments were concerned as far as consistency with the neighborhood is concerned. I just want to remind him and all others present that the first 350 feet back from Ferry Boulevard is C A Zone. Permitted uses in this permitted uses in a C A Zone are retail services, offices, retail sales out of doors, public garages, motor vehicle service stations, theaters, assembly halls, dance halls, bowling alleys, billiard and pool parlors, motels, restaurants, drive-in restaurants, outside dining, parking lots, newspaper establishments, printing shops, gas or electric substations, nursing homes, adult oriented body piercing or tattoo establishments, assisted living facilities, car washes, and self-storage facilities. So these are all permitted uses at the corner of Willow Street and Ferry Boulevard. We're proposing something residential. I think that answers, Dave, I think that addresses the question that you raised with me earlier as well. Thank you.
We're not going to be taking any additional comments at this point. All right. Mr. Knott, you're done?
Yes.
At this point, I'm going to ask for this application, a motion to table, I'm sorry, not a table, to close the public hearing.
So moved, Madam Chair, I'll motion to close.
The move to close by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mr. Giuliano, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. And we're going to move to the next application.
We've heard the tough part. It also gives Washington Boulevard a chance to set up. It also gives Washington Parkway a chance to set up their presentation.
You guys, do you guys want a one-minute break?
Yeah.
Two-minute break? We'll take a two-minute recess while they set up.
Hello, how are you?
Okay. I don't know where I left off. Who's reading this time? Is it, Mr. Fuller, you're reading Washington Avenue?
Oh, yeah. Oh. Yes, good evening, everybody. For the record agenda item, technically number three on the agenda, but we moved around 55, Washington Parkway, petition of D P D Realty LLC seeking a special case approval to convert a roller skating rink, which people would know as Rink by Marnix, into a nine-unit residential apartment in an RS-4 zone, district, I'm sorry, not zone.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Ms. Peppin, Madam Secretary, members of the Commission, Mr. Hibansky. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of D B T Realty LLC. David DeCilio, who was in the first row to my left, who lives at 6020 Main Street, Stratford, is the managing member. At this time, I'd like to submit certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits and photographs to which, which I've handed to each of you and to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first eight of which are photographs of the area in question, which is, of course, the old skating rink property down on Washington Parkway, next to Marnix and across from where skippers used to be, et cetera. So I won't go through the photos one by one. You will recognize them. I have a description of what the photo represents underneath each photo, and I think they are self-explanatory. Purpose of the photographs is to show the dilapidated condition of the skating rink and the commercial nature of the other property in the immediate vicinity to this property. Exhibit nine is a copy of the assessor's map upon which I have highlighted the lot in question at 55 Washington Parkway, and I've outlined it, I've highlighted it in yellow. And you can see within that lot, there is a smaller rectangle, which is in fact the building represented by the skating rink. So you can see from this exhibit nine, that the building currently takes up the majority of the lot. Exhibit 10 is a copy of the assessor's card for this property, and you can see from this card that the building was built in 1956. The site is 19,803 square feet in size. The roller skating rink contains 9,936 square feet. Exhibit 10, exhibit 11, excuse me, is a copy of the existing conditions survey for the property. This is what's there now. This is the roller skating rink that's shown on exhibit 11. Once again, you can see from this exhibit that the roller skating rink takes up a majority of the site as far as building coverage is concerned. Now exhibit 12 is a copy of the proposed site plan and architectural drawings that Pat Rose will get to in a minute, but I want you to notice that I've outlined in green the exterior footprint of the proposed building on the site plan, S P 1, so that you can see the lot coverage of the proposed building is substantially reduced in relation to the lot coverage of the roller skating rink, which you saw in the previous exhibit. Attached to this exhibit 12 are the various grading and utility plans, as well as the floor plans, and then as you get to the last two pages of this exhibit, you can see the architectural plans as well. And what we're talking about here is nine townhouse-style units with a staggered front facade, each containing a living room, kitchen, dining area, half bathroom, and first-floor deck on the first floor, with two bedrooms and two full baths on the second floor, with a third-floor study and outdoor deck. Now, prior to submitting this special case application to you, my client submitted applications for variances and for coastal area management approval to the border zoning appeals. Exhibits 13 and 14 are copies of the approval letters that we received from the B Z A with respect to the variance and CAM applications, both of which were approved by the B Z A on December 6, 2016. No other approvals are needed, other than zoning commission approval, which we are seeking tonight. Now, at this time, I want to introduce Pat Rose of Rose Tiso &amp; Company Architects, surveyors, engineers, who will take you through a detailed presentation of the site plan, the hydrology drainage study, and FEMA compliance. Pat will also address an issue regarding stormwater management design, which was raised by Christina Beato, our conservation administrator, in her administrative comments to Jay dated January 6, 2017. Pat?
Good evening. Patrick Rose from Rose Tiso &amp; Company, licensed architect in state Connecticut. Just would like to go through the site and building quickly for you, so you can better understand the drawings that you have before you. Existing site on Washington Parkway, Marnix to the south, residential to the north and to the west. The existing roller rink building here is hatched. See, it takes up most of the existing lot. There are some parking spaces along Washington Parkway that let you access the water and the breakers here. What we're looking at doing is taking down the existing building, which is about 52% lot area, significant coverage of the lot, and constructing nine townhouse units that run from south to north in line. There are nine of them here. What you have is parking off of Washington Parkway underneath the building, underneath the nine units. This is a continuous parking lot underneath it. It's not your typical townhouse that has parking garage underneath it. It's all parking of the 10 spaces and 10 spaces on either side. So it's wide open, other than where there are some walls and the entrances. The entrances are on the north side, so you park, take a walk here, enter your unit here on the north, from the north side. Same, if you were parking over here, you'd come across, go through the sidewalk, go up these stairs, up to the unit. So the nine entrances are on this north side. Along with the parking down here, we've got some storage for kayaks, canoes, things like that. Accessible space in the back. What we've done with refuse and recycling is that we have on the adjacent to the sidewalk, we have individual refuse and recycling containers for each one of the nine units. The storm drainage system, there is a storm drainage system here, which is underground galleries, about 180 linear feet, which are sized for a 25-year storm. I'll just digress to conservation's comments, which we responded to. You probably have a copy of our response in your package, but one of the comments was, the applicant has only assessed stormwater management design through the 25-year storm. Being in an area prone to significant flooding in 50- and 100-year storms should also be assessed. And our response to that is the area is prone to flooding during the 50- and 100-year storm events. According to FEMA, the site surface will be inundated during those periods, and therefore the hydrological analysis is not warranted, because the majority of the surface will be underwater already. It's not going to, it's not going to store any more water. It's being stored on the surface of the building. So the normal storm events, five, 10, 25 years, are what you need to analyze for your typical rainstorm, and taking that water and discharging it back into the groundwater. Just go through the other, quick other comments that she had, which are pretty simple. Applicant should provide an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater infrastructure will be responsible for the maintenance, and operation and maintenance plan and manual will be provided to the town staff for review prior to C O. Maintenance and inspection details are on S P 2. Responsibility party is D P D Realty and will be contracting with, through a property manager for site maintenance. I mean, we'll have a maintenance plan. Number three, would the concrete stormwater storage galleries be accessible for maintenance? This is not clear in the plans. Said yes, the stormwater storage pipes will have cleanout risers at either end every run, six cleanouts total. S P 2 has been revised in, we've revised the cleanouts on either side for, on S P 2 to show that. And fourth one, it appears that as though the catch basins on the east side of the proposed building will collect runoff from Washington Parkway. If so, then the applicant should consider separation, separator to remove sediment and oils from stormwater prior to this entering the stormwater galleries. Per our discussions with the town engineer, we actually raised this site about two feet, because they have a project that, which is going to go forward on Washington Parkway, that they're going to be changing the drainage. Right now, the low point on Washington Parkway is way back here, which is not good. So they're going to be raising this, so that it drains back out to Long Island Sound. So we've raised our site up, and we are not going to be discharging onto Washington. Washington Parkway will not be discharging onto our site. We'll be up higher than Washington Parkway. So we'll contain our drainage within our site. So that, that not necessarily a comment that's correct based on the current drawings. Solar control, typical solar control, hay bales and soap fences. Got landscaping on the perimeter against the Marnix side, and some more landscaping against the residential side, and also on this residential side to the west, and some trees in the front. What we've done, just skip through this, through the building, just so you can understand Ground floor, similar, you're entering from Washington Parkway, parking space, sidewalk, entrance on the north side. On this south side, these are decks on each level facing Long Island Sound, which you'll see. Typical first floor, entrance, living room, stairway, half bath, and then kitchen, dining room, and a large deck. We've staggered the building to give some change to that facade, and it's not all one long, long building, to be able to do that. So all of these nine units are the same. Upstairs, coming up the central stair, you've got a master bedroom, closets, bathroom, the second bathroom, washer dryer, and the second, and the second bedroom on this, on this side, which you've got a large deck off the master bedroom. On the third floor, which I'll go to here, this central stair comes up, and there's a den space on the third floor with a deck, a narrower deck out to the south, then a mechanical room on the north side, that's shielded by the roof to some degree. So in looking at what these buildings will be, is that from, from the street side, you will see this facade, that's a stone on the lower portions, the pillars and walls that are the parking area. Above that, you'll have a vinyl-type shake above that with simulated wood trim, more of a shingle-style house, large shingle-style house. Entrance here to the front door, and this is one unit here. Second unit is here, as that, those nine go across. This roof is at 612, it's a large roof, but it's a fairly deep building. So the den that's on the third floor is essentially contained within the attic space of that building. That's why we created that den, because we had space to do that with, and then put a deck out on this side with a mechanical unit out here, which I'll show you the other elevation. That, that mechanical unit is in this location right here, underneath the roof. It's contained underneath the roof here. This, the elevation of the water side, where each of these, each of these units has a deck, a deck, and then a smaller deck on the, on the den, den third floor.
Now, as far as I'm concerned, what I'm about to discuss is the most important aspect of this application, and that is my client's outreach to the Lordship community prior to submitting any applications to this commission or any other board of the town of Stratford. Exhibit 15 is a recapitulation of a timeline that I wrote of my client's involvement with the Lordship community in preparation for submitting any petitions to the B Z A or to the zoning commission. In the summer of 2015, he and his wife bought the skating rink, not knowing what they were going to do with it. They met with Lordship neighbors at Marnix to get a sense of what that community may want to replace the old building, and the overwhelming response was to design a residential project. January 20, 2016, a condominium building was designed and presented to the Lordship Improvement Association by Pat Rose. Question and answer session followed. Over 60 people attended that meeting. There was overwhelming support for the removal of the dilapidated skating rink and construction of a quality condo project. Several questions were asked about flooding, parking, sightlines were brought up, which we tried to address. August 2, 2016, Dave posted roller skating rink redevelopment plans on nextdoorneighbor.com Lordship Community. Nextdoorneighbor.com is a new website. You can, you can join the, whatever neighborhood you live in, and as it turns out, Lordship, the Lordship community has got 800, or over 600 people on the nextdoorneighbor.com Lordship community. He told, he provided them with updates as to what was going on. He received 15 replies, all of which were positive, and 25 thank-yous. On August 17, 2016, he did another presentation to the Lordship Improvement Association regarding the project you see before you tonight. Exhibit 16 is actually a copy of Dave's posting on nextdoor.com, and I have highlighted, I've attached to the posting itself, comments that he received from people who responded to him. And I've highlighted in yellow all of the comments, and I've also highlighted in yellow the addresses of the people who responded. And those of you who are familiar with Lordship can see that all of these people were Lordship residents. Looks like a good plan. I hope all goes well. I really look forward to not having to look at that old roller skating rink. Sounds like a lovely plan. Great news, David, you have our support. Sounds good, will make the area much nicer, et cetera, et cetera. Now, subsequent to Dave's October 2, 2016 post, which I just read through, Dave provided continuous postings to the nextdoorneighbor.com Lordship residents regarding the project's progress as it wound its way through the border zoning appeals variance and CAM approval process. Want to reference exhibit 17 of the packet, which is a collection of 24 reply posts that Dave received from people who saw his continuous updates on the nextdoor.com website. Once again, I've highlighted these in yellow. All of them are positive. All of the people are from Lordship, and I got to tell you that in doing this for 43 years now, God help me, I have never represented a client that has done more as far as community outreach, transparency, keeping the neighbors informed, and essentially seeking their input as to what they would like to see down at this location. It's very impressive. Now, I'd like to discuss the administrative comments. Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Engineering Department, Health Department, Public Works Department, Economic Development Department, all had no comment. Tina Beato of the Conservation Department raised some issue regarding stormwater management, which Pat Rose has already addressed. Jay stated in his administrative comments, the existing roller skating rink has been vacant for over a decade, and in the, in the proposed development, and the proposed development would restore the property to a more productive use for the town in the immediate neighborhood. The proposed development would additionally remove a blighted property from the neighborhood. Overall, I feel the proposed development is a positive change in regards to the existing use. As mentioned prior, the application will return the property to a more productive use and remove a blighted property from Stratford's waterfront. Here we have a situation where the applicant is changing an existing non-conforming use, abandoned commercial building, to a brand-new nine-unit residential condominium, and bringing the site into compliance with the FEMA regulations. Those of you who have spent a hurricane or 10 down at the seawall know that when we have a storm down there, the water goes halfway up Washington Parkway. That's what this building was designed to accommodate. So we've got a situation here where we are completely, fully compliant with this, with this new iteration of development. My client has made every effort to reach out to the Lordship community and make them aware of what was being proposed for a roller skating rink. As you can see from exhibit 16 and 17, he sought and received input as to proposed uses from the neighbors, and has presented a plan which is residential in neighborhood and would act as an appropriate transition use from the residential property to the north of the roller skating rink, and the commercial restaurant, bar, and hotel to the south of the roller skating rink. I believe that this application deserves your support. Thank you.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll open it up to some questions. Mr. Knott, you're good?
I'm good.
Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Knott. I have a, just kind of like three broad questions. A couple constituents in the first district reached out to me, just first district being Lordship up to the historic district, mostly Lordship, Stratford Road down to the Lordship area, but not close to proposed site. They were concerned that there would be like low-income housing here, so, and I don't think that's the case from the documents I read and from what you presented here tonight. So what's the market demographic you're looking for? What sort of rents are you looking to?
Well, these aren't going to be rentals. These are going to be sold.
Okay, so, so these will be owned?
They're going to be, it's going to be a condominium project. They're going to, these units are going to be owned by people who are going to live there.
Okay.
My client and I have had numerous discussions about what the price point should be for these units. We don't exactly agree. I think they're going to sell for significantly higher than he does because of all these decks facing the water.
Oh, yes.
Time, time will tell. They're not going to be cheap. They're not going to be cheap.
Yeah. No, that was, that was what the concern I was hearing from a couple residents who live within a mile, mile and a half of there, in the greater Lordship neighborhood. My other two questions, I don't know if you would be the appropriate answer, or if Mr. DeCilio would be. Kind of what, what would be the max build-out if, say, if you wanted to go a whole bunch of condos on here, or a whole bunch of apartments? What would be the maximum build-out?
Well, putting aside affordable, which, I wouldn't be standing here if this was an affordable application, because I don't, I don't.
Oh, yeah. Let's take 830G out of the equation.
I can't ima, I mean, I suppose you could build a three- or four-story apartment house, but we wouldn't get it approved, for one thing.
What I'm really trying to go at is kind of what, what this project is relative to a max build-out.
Well, this is very modest. I mean, we have, we have a plan that shows 14 units. This, this shows nine.
Yeah, this is almost 50%.
Yeah. No, we, I actually have a plan in my file that's got a 14-unit complex.
That's what I was really trying to get at with the question.
Which we decided not to pursue, because these are going to be more marketable.
And then my final question, I guess this is more for Mr. DeCilio, just kind of, because there's a lot of fond memories about the roller skate and something of Stratford's past, could you just tell me kind of what, what challenges would be if you tried to maintain some sort of recreational business there? Just kind of, just for the record, to show the hardship of trying to maintain some sort of recreational use?
Well, as my attorney, Mr. Knott, said, one of the very first meetings was with a half a dozen of the neighbors in that direct vicinity, who I call them like kind of the movers or shakers out in Lordship. And every single one of them, with the exception of Charles Gaultier's wife, Susan, said, we don't want anything commercial, we don't want any bars, we don't want any restaurants, you know, it's, there's actually some issues down there now with people at the seawall after hours and that type of stuff. So the residents down there wanted residential. The existing building can be at great expense, probably razed and retrofitted and recited. It just didn't seem like the logical approach after speaking with the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just one last.
By the way, David DeCilio, 6020 Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut.
Not so much a question, but I just want to commend the amount of outreach that you've done to the Lordship community, too. It's always refreshing to see so much homework going in, even before you put a pen to a, to a site plan.
Well, thank you.
I'm also, Madam Chair.
Good. Anybody else? Mr. Giuliano?
Sure. I'll give it a shot. This would be for Attorney Knott. On the summary that we get over here, one part over here says, the applicant, and I guess they're equating to 5.3, the apartment equivalent. All right? You would know more, because you probably wrote it, after 43 years, I'm sure.
I wrote parts of it.
I know. Just saying, so are we in or out of regulation here for what we're trying to do here? Because, before you go, being a newbie, I see what I get, and I see there's been quite the variances going on with this piece of property, and it's been everywhere. So maybe just briefly, you could just touch base for me on that?
Yeah, we needed some variances from the border zoning appeals. Yeah, we needed some variances from the border zoning appeals in order to, to make the site plan work. As far as 5.3 is concerned, Jay and I disagree as to the applicability of 5.3. We both agree that 5.3 applies. 5.3 is your residence apartment regulation. It says there are 604.5 unit equivalents of apartments town-wide, but no more than 100 in any one school district. As it turns out right now, all of the resident, all of the unit equivalents in the town have been used up. There are no more residence apartments available under Section 5.3. It's my position that because there are no residence apartments available in 5.3, this is a non-conforming use. Jay's position that because Section 5.3 applies, this isn't a non-conforming use, even though if I went in to try and get a building permit under 5.3, I couldn't get one because there aren't any unit equivalents available. The law says that you are entitled, you as the zoning commissioner are entitled to make the decision as to what's appropriate or not. Jay and I are probably, I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm not saying I'm right, and he's not saying I'm wrong either. I think it's very possible that we're both right. The point is this, whether Section 5.3 makes this a conforming use or a non-conforming use is irrelevant at this stage of the game. Because the border zoning appeals has already granted them a variance of Section 5.3, based upon it being a non-conforming use. So, that ship has already sailed. You have the authority to approve this application, based upon what is being presented to you tonight. So, I mean, it's a confusing story.
So, basically, being that it's just such a non, non-conforming use, that this will just fit into there, even though the planning and zoning already said that, and we're not gonna get any issues over this, and?
No, the reason why it came up at all, is because there's a, there's a body of cases having to do with variances, that said, "If you go from one non-conforming use to a less egregious non-conforming use, you don't have to prove a hardship." So, when we went to the border zoning appeals, my position was, I was going from one non-conforming use, a commercial roller skating rink, to a less egregious non-conforming use, a nine-unit condo. Therefore, we didn't have to prove a hardship. Border zoning appeals agreed with me and granted the variance. No appeals taken, so that's over and done with. So, that issue really isn't before you tonight. Jay mentioned it in his administrative comments, because it was something that he and I had been talking about for the last three months.
Okay, and just maybe one more, possibly two, probably go to Mr. Rose. "In relationship with this property, on the print is all very doing fine, would this front of this building be in step with the rest of the houses coming down towards it before you get to Marinix?" Because I'm kind of having a little issue trying to develop in my mind if it's stepped up in front towards the road more, or even with the houses next to it?
You're talking about the sightline, right?
Yeah. Is the sightline, do you know offhand? Because I know you moved it forward, I think I read that you moved it forward to the road by 14 feet, by 6.5 feet?
Correct.
So, will that be sticking out in front more of the houses in line?
Yes, it will.
It will be?
Yeah, because there, we got a variance associated with the front yard.
And that's the reason why?
Correct.
Because of the variance? I mean, so, sticking out? And then, height-wise, you're pretty much higher than everybody else over there, and nobody else has said anything about that, I see.
We have a variance, we have a variance for the height, going from 30 to 36. It's not a tremendous difference.
And there hasn't, I see we have all people saying, yes, they all love this, and I'll just have to wait till we get, see if there's any people here against it.
I mean, the, actually, the houses up, further up Washington Parkway are taller than the 30 feet, the older houses are taller.
Really?
Yeah.
All right. And that's about basically it, I have all to say. Thank you so much.
I'm just gonna go down the line, Mr. Pep, Ms. Pepin?
I just have one question. So, the front of the condos will be facing the north side? Is that right?
Right.
And then, all the, the porches and decks will be facing the south side?
Correct.
Over, okay.
Mr. Raguskas?
Thank you, I have just one question. You have, is it true, there's one parking space per unit?
No, there's, there's, there's one, there's 18, there's 18 parking spaces, two for each unit, plus two additional parking spaces, which is an extra 10% for visitors theoretically.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fuller?
Oh, yeah, just two quick questions, I guess some more technical questions. With the, so effectively, what the border zoning appeals ruled on was whether nine residential units would be appropriate for that site, so.
Well, no, you've got to make that decision.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, you've got to make that decision.
Okay, so, pretty much, they already ruled on the whole non-conformity issue, so that's something, based on state laws, we can't interfere with.
Yeah, no, it's in your ballpark.
Yeah.
The appropriateness is in your ballpark.
Well, I think that was pretty much, oh, yeah, the other question is, to my knowledge of Washington Parkway, that there is elevation, the more you go away from the shore, the more uphill you go, so, the further back the houses are, the more likelihood, they're less obstructed with the view.
That's what Pat meant to say, when he was, when he told you, "The farther up Washington Parkway, the higher the houses get." He didn't mean that the houses were taller, vis-à-vis the land.
The elevation was.
Yeah, and it meant they were higher, vis-à-vis this location.
Yeah, I remember, there's a little hill that goes down, as it gets close to the seawall. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm all set.
I just have a couple. More around storage and flooding. I know you said you, you have designed it for a 25-year storm, if it's more like a 100-year or 500-year storm, everybody's flooded, we know it's flooded. Are there provisions for people to, or plans that you're gonna post where people should put their cars at, if there is such a tremendous storm like it was before?
Well, I mean, you've got all, yes, actually. Where do you live, Stephanie? No, I mean, they're gonna be up, they're gonna be up Washington Parkway, up by Ocean Avenue, that's where they're gonna be, along with everybody else that lives in the neighborhood.
I'm just wondering if you're gonna post or do something to allow, to at least alert people that they have them with their cars?
No, because even if we kept them at the seawall, they'd be underwater.
They'd be underwater.
They gotta go up the hill.
Okay. Which leads me to the second thing. We had a little bit of an issue in the last really big storm with property just floating away, you know, people storing things outside, it happens. Do you provide enough storage, cage storage, so that things don't float away, blow away?
We provided storage within the units itself. We're not providing storage on the lowest level, because it prone to flooding, that won't do that. The only thing that we have down there are the refuse containers, which will be on a slab essentially, next to the entrance.
Would you be willing to put a bike rack, so that people can lock it?
We're gonna have bike racks, we're gonna have kayak, we show kayak, you know, racks and things like that.
So, if they have stuff, sporting equipment, they could lock it down to something?
It'll be locked, locked to a rack that's set in concrete, so it's not going anywhere.
That's all I was looking for, just to minimize how much floats down the river.
Right.
I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else here have any questions? Okay, at this point?
Very much.
Thank you. I am gonna open it up to the public, if anybody would like to come up in support of this application, please come up now. Anybody in support? Okay, anybody in opposition? Anybody opposed this application? Please come forward now. Let's all not rush. It doesn't appear that there's any comment, and I appreciate that. Is there any further comment from the applicant? Otherwise, I will ask the motion to table this.
A motion to?
Not, sorry, not to table, to close.
Close the, I'll motion to close the petition of 55 Washington Parkway.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pepin? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chair votes yes, the motion is, the application is closed. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one. Papers away. Okay, Nichols Avenue, I have an announcement, I just learned. Are there people here for Nichols Avenue?
Did they leave?
They probably left, they probably heard. Nichols Avenue did not submit their letters of notification.
Could I just ask, very quickly, the town of Stratford didn't submit?
I, yeah, we can call them up. Mr. Raguskas, could you read, just for the record, 396, we'll call them up?
Okay, 396 Nichols Ave, petition of Town of Stratford, seeking special case approval to construct a new parking lot and pickup slash drop-off area for a school in an RS4 district.
Thank you. Could the applicant come up and talk to the letters?
Good evening, for the record, it's Chris Hulk, civil engineer with Mylona McBroom, on behalf of the applicant. The notifications had not been sent out, so we were requesting that the, this meeting be continued to next month.
To next month. Thank you very much. Okay. The next application, I'd like to take together number seven and eight on our agenda, which is 1526 Stratford Avenue, would be Ms. Pepin?
1526 Stratford Avenue, petition of Two Roads, seeking special case approval to establish a manufacturer of beer and brew public, pub facility in an MA slash CA district. 1526 Stratford Avenue, petition of Two Roads, seeking an approval of a liquor location for a manufacturer of beer and brew pub facility in an MA slash CA district.
Thank you very much. And the applicant? Your letters? Thank you.
Good evening. Anybody ready for a beer?
Please.
I'm just gonna, my name is Brad Hiddle, I'm the founding partner and CEO of Two Roads Brewing Company at 1700 Stratford Avenue. And I'm gonna give you a little background on the project, and then Brian and Neil from Neil Howke Architecture will take you through the detailed plans. So, Two Roads has been in business for four years, we're growing very nicely, we have 100 employees at the brewery. And part of our expansion plans require that we'd like to build a separate facility on the property at 1526 Stratford Avenue, to create a barrel aging and souring facility, which is a growing segment of the craft beer industry in the United States. And we would like to partake in that, and it's going to enhance the value of the overall property, it's gonna attract a lot of people from in-state and out-of-state to the town, which is very beneficial to the town and to us. And that's the background on, on the project. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I can turn it over to Neil and Brian.
Any questions? Would you like to have any further explanation? Mr. Fuller, would you have any questions?
Yeah, just very briefly, so, I, I'm familiar with Two Roads, I'm familiar with the Connecticut microbrewery scene in general. So, is the ultimate goal here something similar to like Thimble Island, and Brewport, and Bridgeport, to have kind of like a pub, restaurant sort of area, that where Two Roads could sell their beer and have events, and do what they need to do?
Most of that is take, already taking place at the existing brewery. This is more of a serious beer experience that will, will take place at this new facility. These are beers that have been aged for between.
Okay, so, this is more like a connoisseur level sort of?
Yes, yes.
Beer?
There will be a tasting room, but it's all gonna be much more of an aficionado environment rather, rather than.
Okay, and the liquor permit that goes along with this goes more towards the production and the brewing of beer, as well as sale and distribution?
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty much, and what's the general hours of operation? That's, that's the other one?
The same as the other brewery.
Okay, so, it's consistent with Two Roads' general operating procedure? Thank you, this are the questions I have.
Okay, Mr. Giuliano?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Pepin?
Absolutely, I'm good.
Mr. Raguskas?
No questions, thanks.
I don't really have any questions, just a comment. I think this is a wonderful comment on the Town of Stratford, the fact that Two Roads is almost doubling in size, is a plus, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
It certainly serves to give us confidence that there is investment in our town, and it's a compliment on everyone. So, thank you very much, and I think it's a good plan, and I know you've worked very hard with the Planning and Zoning Administrator and the Economic Development Office, and I think this is a positive project to move forward.
Thank you, I would like to commend the town, and the people that we work with, they're extremely professional and very helpful. I mean that from the bottom of my heart, so, it's great to be in Stratford for us.
Nice, nice to hear.
Yeah.
At this point, I, unless there's any other testimony you want to bring forward, no other questions, I'm gonna turn it to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward.
I'm in favor.
Is there anybody who, anybody else, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this application, or oppose it? Any statement at all? Busy night. At that point, no other comments or questions, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
By Ms. Pepin? Second by Mr. Raguskas, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Chair votes yes, unanimous, motion is closed. Application is closed. Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna leave, jump to, I think our applicants are back. Allison Pearlie, with the 3600 Main Street. I don't know where I left off at. I'll just read it, just to bring us back up to date, it's 3600 Main Street, the petition of Allison Pearlie, seeking a special case approval to establish an ice cream shop in a CA district. And we have our registry, mailings of registration, thank you.
Thank you for seeing us again, sorry, I forgot that was the first time.
We could've made you come back with ice cream, but that's okay.
If we had ice cream, trust me, we would've brought it back, yes, soon. My name is Allison Pearlie, I am a lifelong resident of Stratford, we live at 178 Hurda Ave, this is my husband, Chris, and we are proposing to open an ice cream store in Paradise Green, right next to Paradise Pizza. It's a freestanding building, and I grew up eating Baskin Robbins ice cream in Paradise Green, and I, we feel like that area is missing something like that, so we're proposing to open a store.
Wonderful.
That's it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Fuller?
Oh, yeah, just, just routine questions. What's your general hours of operation? Or what's your intended hours of operation?
We are planning on being open year-round, and Monday, all week long, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday, we are thinking 12 to 9, and then Friday and Saturday, 12 to 10, and Sunday, probably like 12 to 8.
And it could be flexible from there, but that's very consistent within, over businesses, within Paradise Green. My other question is just, do you know what you're gonna call the business yet, or is that still?
We do, mhm, we're gonna call it Paradise Cream.
Paradise Cream?
Yeah.
Paradise Cream.
It's gonna be spelled ICE rather than ISE, and then float in with the logos, got an ice cream cone in between the, for the I.
The D and the I, right.
Very nice.
Excellent, and I think it's very consistent with a lot of use that's there already, I mean, we've had a Baskin Robbins there before. We just approved a donut shop and coffee shop at the other end.
We heard.
There's a tea place, there's sitting duck, there's a lot of food to be had, 7-Eleven across the street. I have no other questions of this, I don't see any major zoning issues of it either.
Mr. Giuliano?
Just noticed in some of the comments here that they're not allowed to have any seating, but they have a bar there, and they're not, I mean, can we put a stipulation later? I mean, how can you not have a bar stool there? I mean, I wanna go sit down where it's cool and eat an ice cream. I don't wanna stand, especially if I walk that far.
I think those comments came from the Health Department, right?
Yeah, and, I mean.
That is.
I mean, if you look at the drawing of the inside, there's, you know what, I should save this for the administration, I'm sorry.
You are correct, though, we would love to put our schools without having to put $10,000 into a handicap bathroom, which is probably what they're thinking from the seating perspective. So, it kind of makes it a, more of a takeout situation, and, you know, the bar is really...
One second.
That would be fantastic, if you could put a stipulation in there, then when we went to the Health Department, maybe they could work with us on that, because we want the same thing, but it's a little cost prohibitive to start, to try to even lay the store out with where the bathroom is, because that store is built halfway with a basement underneath it, and then the second part of it in the back, where it looks like there's all this room, is on slab, so you can't get any... room, is on slab, so you can't get any bathroom or toilets any farther back. So it ruins the entire flow of the store. You have to try to make that handicap accessible and have the bathroom operating for patrons. So, you know, I don't know if our stools have been leaning against something that constitutes a seating. Maybe there's something that you guys can help with.
I think Mr. Fuller has some thoughts.
Yeah. The Health Department, I don't wanna speak for the Health Department, because I don't know all the regulations they have to go through, but usually, we've seen this with other ice cream places before, like Dairy Queen and Goody Bassin'. A lot of it has to do with Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA compliance, too. So Health Department might be looking at some federal and state codes that prompts them to make that sort of stipulation.
Thank you.
You always have the opportunity to go back with a different design, even after an approval here, to see if that could be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Peppin?
Will this be homemade ice cream?
No, we're going to be getting it from a supplier called Buck's in Milford. They supply to Scoopy Doo's, and we frequent there often. And we have three kids, one in high school, and at Stratford High, one at Worcester, one at Wilcox, and they all love Scoopy Doo's, so we decided to go with them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rukuskas?
The only question I have, the only concern, because I think this sounds like a great idea, but an ice cream shop could have the potential for litter out in the streets. Is there anything that you're going to be able to do to ensure that the sidewalks stay clear?
We'd be more than happy to contribute, whether it's spending our own money for an additional garbage outside. We have to provide a dumpster from what we've been told at this point out back, so we'd be more than happy, as part of what we do in keeping the green clean, so to speak, to do what we can to help facilitate that. Sell more ice cream cones for less litter would be great, you know, rather than the cups, you know, and make sure... We are using a biodegradable cup to a certain extent, but you know, it is... As much as we could do to help keep the area... Like, we live down the road. We live in Paradise Green, so we go to... The youngest is at Wilcox, and we've all gone through. I was on the board for the Wilcox and Fathers Club. We've done tons for the town and giving back to the community, so certainly, we will do everything we can. If it needs an extra garbage can out there, whenever it is...
We wanna keep it clean and free of that, obviously. You know, I mean, we're gonna... It hasn't even opened yet, and I am already taking pride in just the pictures we have. So I will be on top of that. I will be there most of the time, so that is definitely something that I will take care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't... Oh, I have one other question. I see the comment from the Police Department. Is there a bike rack near there somewhere?
There's multiple bike racks. I think there are bike racks. There are youths that go like this. I don't say that those are bike racks. I haven't seen bike racks, bikes in them, but there are bike racks along that area.
It was part of the beautification of Paradise Green done several years ago.
I thought there was one, but I wasn't quite sure if there was one closest to there.
They put them in...
Yes, Stratford.
Yeah, I think there's one in front of Paradise Pizza, which is right next door.
I know the police talk about make sure all the crosswalks in the area are painted accordingly. What do they mean by that?
Where the store is, there's like, we are right in front of the crosswalk. There's kind of like the sidewalk, and then it like shuts out, and then you can press the button to go across. It is painted. My kids cross every day for school, so I don't know why. Maybe they just had to...
Just mention it.
Yeah, I also don't think it's the responsibility. I saw that. Of the whole area is the property and the town.
Yeah, I think the crosswalk, the painting, is actually town property or state, if it's a numbered road. So I don't even know. That'd be an unfair burden on the petitioner. And the garbage cans, the ones that are like on the walkway at Paradise Green, that might be up to the owner of Paradise Green, as opposed to the store tenants, too. So I don't know if that's something we could stipulate, but rather recommend, if we do opt to approve this, to the owner to provide just more garbage and recycling receptacles.
Yeah, great. And if you could put something in that my kids have to clean it, that would help.
We don't get into the micromanagement business here.
Would you have any sugar-free ice cream?
I was waiting. I was like, the one more question is gonna be, are you serving pistachio? Or something like that. But yes, there will be sugar, yes.
I don't have any questions, other than the fact that you're gonna make it impossible for me to lose weight.
And we're gonna have some fat-free yogurt, too, so...
Are there any other questions for the applicant? We're good? At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Ice cream, good.
Good evening. Tom Gallotti, 492 King Street. I'll make it brief. I know you wanna get out of here. When Baskin Robbins left the green, it left the ice cream void. This is gonna fill it. It's in a good location. It's right in the center. You just approved a donut shop at the south end of the green. Last month, Mr. Paul had said he wanted more foot traffic in the green. This is gonna be foot traffic. Kids coming home from school over the summer, kids visiting their grandparents. Chris and Allison, they're good people. They're Stratford people. They've been here. You know, they went through the Stratford School System. They live near Longbow Park. They're good people. About the garbage, I believe that Public Works empties the garbage receptacles in the green. I believe I've seen them doing that. You could check, though. Maybe they could place one in front of their business. But there are, you know, receptacles there, and I think I've seen them changing. Could be wrong, but that's it. Thank you.
You wanna hire that guy? Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak opposed? Not seeing anybody else to speak. I'd like to get a motion to close this application.
I'm gonna make a motion to close 3600 Main Street's public hearing.
Second by Mr. Giuliano?
Second at...
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Good night. We have two text amendments that are there, and then we're gonna move right into administrative session, okay? Number four, number five. I don't know where... Mr. Giuliano, I think we left off, I think, with you? We gotta do one at a time, because they are very different. So let's start with number four.
Okay. Text amendment, petition of Stratford Zoning Commission, seeking to add new text to 20.3 for final plan review and extensions for special cases.
Thank you very much. Now, this is our text amendment that we had written up during our administrative session. It's been circulated to all the government agencies. Mr. Hivansky, you wanted to speak to that, but I saw several letters of it going out to everybody.
Sure. We received the text amendment was referred to the Planning Commission for recommendation. On January 17th, 2017, the Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation for the approval of the text amendment for its consistency with Town of Stratford's 2013 Plan and Conservation and Development. One of the recommendations made by the Planning Commission was to... I'll just read it word for word. The zoning commission should consider reducing the cumulative total of years before the mandate to return to the zoning commission from the proposed six years to four and a half years. The purpose of the reduction is to increase the probability that the zoning, a zoning commissioner will have sat on the subject application prior, given the four-year term for commissioners.
Okay.
So the zoning commission can choose to change the text from six to 4.5 years, if you all feel that that's something that would be wise.
Any questions, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I have a question. A term on the zoning commission is only four years.
Correct. But the application, well, they're initially given 18 months to... They're initially given 18 months to get the approval done. After that, they can come back for their four extensions, which will be approximately... Will be approximately four and a half years. I think that was the rationale behind it.
Four extensions is not four and a half years.
Three, I'm sorry. Is it three?
It'd be more like less, barely three.
They didn't wanna keep it to a number of extensions. They basically wanted to keep it to the years, so that it would increase the probability of a commissioner still being on the board who actually heard the initial petition.
Mr. Fuller, did that answer your question?
Not really. It kinda changes the whole purpose of what we're going at here.
Yeah, I'm not there, but let me walk down. I'll start from the end. Mr. Rukuskas, I know you're new to this, but do you have any questions, or at least one to be brought up to date?
I have two more comments. One thing is that it is possible for a zoning commissioner to serve for more than four years, is it not? If they're appointed to finish out a term, they can then run for their own four-year term after that?
Yes.
Okay, so six years might make more sense, to stay with that. The other thing is that my writer slash editor self found what appears to be a missing word in the new proposed language. It's in the second paragraph, the third sentence, about halfway through the paragraph. It says, "The Planning and Zoning Administrator may too refer any request." So it sounds like there's a word missing, "may choose to refer."
Oh, you get extra points.
I'll stop there.
I just wanna just piggyback on what Commissioner Rukuskas is saying. The reason for that is to give the zoning administrator or any staff in out, in case they come across that tough case, and they want... It kinda lets them to refer back to the zoning commissioner or zoning commission to refer back to the zoning administrator. So there's quality control in the land. This way, no one's making a unilateral judgment call that they feel uncomfortable with.
Ms. Peppin? Mr. Giuliano?
I'm leaning toward a four and a half, because the commissioners are on the four years. I mean, you know, it's almost like going down the road with the council. There are two. They should be at the same thing as the mayor. They should be at four years, because they're just getting started, getting something going, and now they're getting out and they gotta run again. And I mean, we should just stay with what's in line with all of us. That's what I feel about it. I'm kinda in line with the four and a half.
Anybody else? I'm actually more comfortable with the six years. I actually have a different take on this. It does sort of defeat. It reduces this down to, all right, they get two extensions. And the reasons that people usually go for an extension is because the economy isn't in a place, or their financing isn't in a place, that they can move forward. And the extensions that we've seen, there's usually some extenuating circumstances. The economy usually takes about six years before it actually changes, and we've been seeing now applications that are six years old and coming back to us. I'm not as concerned about the continuity. That's why you have a zoning administrator. But that's just my thought. Mr. Fuller?
I agree with that, too, because we were very meticulous as to why we chose six years to begin with. That was based on a lot on existing policies, state statutes, kind of how extensions have gone in the past, being that, you know, 18 months, 18 months, 18 months after the initial extension. If we're gonna go four and a half years, we might as well just make it an even number, maybe say four years at that point, because there's another side of it. Hell for the administrative office. Trying to keep a schedule of half years, it takes up so much staff time. It's easier for them to have a calendar on the year about what comes up as what's expiring, what's not expiring, as if we say, well, this half year, this happens, and this half year, this happens.
Yeah, I'm much more in favor of a six years. The whole purpose of this is that the administrator can, will have the history, can look at the application, and at any point in time also refer it back to us if they feel that it needs to be looked at before the six-year period. The other thing is, is that that's why you have a zoning administrator, and I have faith in our zoning commissioners, that someone who is new to the board can pick up and look at the history. We ourselves have been here and have picked up on applications that have been started in the previous zoning commission, and we've moved forward with it. So I don't feel it as an impairment that someone has to have institutional knowledge in the commissioner. We have institutional knowledge in our zoning administrator, and we have detailed records. So I favor leaving it at six.
I concur.
Any other thoughts? We're gonna have to bring this to a motion.
I'll motion to close this text amendment.
Oh, opposition. Yeah, I do have to do the public. Ms. Peppin, do you have any questions before I... Anybody in the public? Anybody would like to speak in favor of the text amendment? Anybody would like to speak in opposition to the text amendment? Seeing that there's no one to speak towards it for or against, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll close the public hearing for the text amendment brought forward by the Stratford Zoning Commission for final, I mean, not final site plan, but for the extensions.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Passes unanimously. Okay, and then we have the next one, number five. Who wants to take that? Mr. Fuller, you wanna grab that one?
Yes, I'll take that one. Number five on the agenda, but number 11 in our hearts. Text amendment by the Stratford Zoning Commission, seeking a new text to Section 3-30 for an extension of a moratorium on medical marijuana and methadone clinics. And for the record, I did mention before this was on hearing, I'm against the moratorium, so I'm recusing myself from this vote. I seek for clear cleanliness of the vote.
Okay. Do you have that gap for that? Mr... For the record, just a note that Mr. Fuller has recused himself. I think we've read that, so... Yeah, why don't you talk about it, because that makes sense at this point.
So on January 17th, I'm sorry. The text amendment for an extension of the medical marijuana methadone clinics moratorium was referred to the Planning Commission on January 17th, 2017. The Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation for the approval of the text amendment based on the fact that the proposed amendment will allow federal and state legislation to evolve regarding medical marijuana and methadone clinics. There are two of their recommendations to the zoning commission. One was that the Planning Commission would like to participate in the review of any text amendments regarding this matter in a cooperative meeting with both the zoning commission and the Planning Commission. That meeting, I believe, has been set up for March 14th, which is our next administrative meeting. Their second recommendation is that the zoning commission should extend the moratorium for... To recreational marijuana, since legalization is currently being considered by state legislature. Recreational marijuana should be integrated into any draft regulations. That's it.
Any questions? Mr. Giuliano?
I'm good.
Ms. Peppin?
I'm good.
Rukuskas?
Nothing.
I don't have anything to add to that. I'm gonna... Is anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the text amendment, the application? Anybody who would like to speak against the application? Seeing that there's no one to speak against or for, I'd like to take a motion to close the public forum for the text amendment. Mr. Giuliano?
I'll make a motion to close the text amendment petition of Stratford Zoning Commission to add the net text for the 3.0 moratorium for medical marijuana and methadone clinics.
I saw a hand go up by... You second, Ms. Peppin? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. I think that's the last application that we had for our public hearing, and if we're good, we can move right into administrative session, and we welcome back Mr. Fuller. Let me just switch my papers around. Okay. All right, moving into the...
Point of order, really quick, Madam Chair. I don't know if I didn't hear it while I was walking back into the chambers or not, but did we formally adjourn the public hearing?
No, we did not.
I'll motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes? Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Covering our bases.
I knew I was missing something. On our petition, we have a few things that we can walk through to see if we want to decide on. The first one on our administrative agenda, 382 Ferry Boulevard. It's a recommendation that we may want to hold off on a discussion on that until 3, March 14, our next administrative session, unless there's someone who would wish to talk about it and discuss it now.
Yeah, just very briefly. If it came to a vote, I'm ready to vote tonight, but I understand why we're holding off. I know there was a question that the town attorney needed to research, hence why procedurally we needed to wait a little bit. And also, I think it's a good thing that we do take a two-week break to kind of really just digest what we heard tonight and really come up with a good reason. We should almost approach this like an affordable housing case in terms of having a very articulate reason for or against the ultimate decision, whether we accept or deny.
That was actually the rationale that I was thinking of it, that we should spend more time to look at all of the information and have more deliberate information on it. Mr. Giuliano, would you have any comment? Do you need to...
No, I'm in conjunction with you over here. I'll wait till March 14 and absorb some more of these prints that he handed out that were changed.
Ms. Peppin?
I agree. I think we should look at the perspective on what the other people had said about raising up now, you know, to five, which I don't understand why they didn't discuss that at their community meeting, but...
Mr. Raguskas?
I think it makes sense to hold off to the 14th.
Okay. Now, we're going to just... Yes, Mr. Giuliano?
Just to go with Mrs. Commissioner Peppin said, raising it up. But it's in the TOD, and I thought we were just no higher than four. Now we want to change that to go to five, six?
It's not the TOD that's in play with this.
It's what?
Section seven that's in play, not section... Well, I forget the number for TOD.
Well, all right. Well, the front is in TOD, so you were talking about the back then?
No, they're talking about the front.
Just to clarify. If a property is partially within the Transit Oriented Development District, the entire property can take advantage of those regulations. It's different than what the base zones are and very different than how that AAA application was handled. The TOD, if they choose to take advantage of those regulations, would apply to the entire property. And I think, and just to address what Commissioner Peppin said about why they didn't address it at the meeting, I don't think the applicant actually knew that, and I pointed it out to them this evening, that it doesn't require a variance to go to 60 feet. It's only the zoning commission has the authority to say, there's something peculiar about this property where, or something unique about it that would give them, you all, the discretion to say, we're going to allow it to go this high.
An advantage for the front one versus...
And I think that that would potentially qualify as something that's somewhat unique. My one comment just about that is, whereas this may be allowing for 60 feet on Ferry, that also sets the new context for Ferry Boulevard, where, you know, this may satisfy some of the residents here. This also may potentially affect some businesses or residents...
Or future applications.
Future applications. We say, well, now the context is set at 60 feet. So just something that should be considered. No, that's it.
Let's see if I understand this correctly. The 60-feet stipulation where we could say, well, this building or this site's peculiar and unique, where we could raise it to 60 feet, that's not the TOD regulation at play. That's Section 7 at play, if I'm not mistaken.
Section 710 is the TOD regulation, and I can actually...
Oh, okay, so that's actually in the TOD regulation?
It is, and I can read it for you if you want to hear it.
It's interesting that you mention that too, because I remember the Salsi property, the one that's right across the street at the 70-something units. Their MA zone allowed for a 60-foot, like the underlying zone, the MA zone, allowed for a 60-foot industrial use. And the TOD actually gave them smaller. So you actually had something right across the street that also hit by right if they went for it, the 60-foot threshold.
Can I make a recommendation? We're going to repeat this whole conversation on March 14. Would you mind if we just moved on and had a chance to talk about it?
Motion to place back on the table, and if any other...
Actually, we never took it off the table.
No.
Okay. 29 Thompson, as you know, was delayed. 55 Washington Parkway, is there a motion to take it off the table?
So moved, I'll take 55 Washington Parkway off the table.
Second by Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes, unanimous. Any comment?
I think this is a good adaptive reuse. I mean, it's a shame to see the roller skate go, but it was never coming back. This isn't a maximum build-out, which I'm encouraged to see. I'm encouraged to see all the homework that was put in, the community support that's behind it, and the outreach that Mr. De Silio and Mr. Knott did for this. I think it's going to be a good thing for the neighborhood, good property values. It's the sort of thing you want to see. By the money, I'd look, consider it one of those things, too.
I agree. I mean, I think that right now it's an eyesore, and I think it will give a positive, you know, outlook on that area. I think the idea of condos that are going to be bought by individuals is a good idea. The density is in that, you know, it's nine units. I like the idea of the deck spacing the water side. I know the front of it, which faces Washington Parkway, is going to have some stone and stuff. I just hope that is kind of looking presentable. I mean, I think it'll look presentable, I just, I don't know. That's my only...
That's fine.
But I like the idea. I think you did a lot of footwork and legwork, footwork.
Mr. Giuliano?
I was very amazed at the people in the neighborhood, how they went for it. I mean, how many times you never... I haven't seen that yet, so... I mean, I'd be all in favor for an outdoor ice skating rink year-round, but I know that ain't happening. So, no, I think it's a great add to the neighborhood. I just think it's great to finally get that out of there.
Mr. Raguskas?
I think it's wonderful that there was so much feedback from the community, and it was unanimously in favor. I think it's a totally appropriate cleanup of an eyesore. I agree with Mr. Fuller, Commissioner Fuller, that it would be great to be able to restore the skating rink, but reality is reality, and it's not going to happen. So this seems like a very good thing.
Well, my only final comment is that I agree with everything that you have said. It's an excellent adaptive reuse, and yes, this is quite an exceptional application where it has so much community support. I wish all of them could be so well-received. With that, can we have a motion to approve? Will somebody make that motion?
Before I make that motion, are there any stipulations we would want to place on approval?
You haven't mentioned any. Is there anyone who would like to put a stipulation on it?
Just to reinforce that they stick with FEMA requirements for height near the shore and waterfront and on all that stuff. I know a lot of that's federally regulated these days, and I'm sure insurance companies also...
Yeah, especially with being that close to the water, I think they're automatically...
So they stipulate that they meet all the regulations for FEMA?
And I'm sure the insurance company would also require that as well.
I would think so. Anybody else? Somebody want to make that motion, please?
I just need to... I'll formally make the motion, but what's on our record?
That was what I needed. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I think that was your first approval, Mr. Raguskas. I'm going to just go in order here, just so that we can move along. We had the text amendment for the final plan review and extension for special cases. That was number five, I think.
Motion to take the text amendment off the table.
I second.
Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Okay. Any other comment, unless you...
A motion to approve the text amendment with the six-year stipulation, as we've intended.
Motion with the six-year? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Raguskas.
Do you need it?
Any other comment? I'm sorry, Mr....
I just wanted to make sure that we accept the friendly amendment from Commissioner Raguskas to add the word "choose" to the text amendment.
To add the "choose," or "select," or "elect," or whatever synonym that makes it sound eloquent and loquacious.
That was good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we're going to go to the next text amendment, which is on the moratorium on the marijuana, medical marijuana and methadone clinics. It does require four people to approve. I need somebody to take it off the table.
I'll take it.
By Ms. Peppin, second. Mr. Raguskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Any... Are you any questions, or are we ready to make a motion? I would suggest a motion to approve.
What about the recommendation from Planning that we add in recreational marijuana? Did we want to...
That's if we actually move forward with a final recommendation to approve it. This is just an extension of the moratorium.
And this is going to be brought up on March 14 with Planning?
With Pla... Well, a joint meeting. Yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, this has been dragged out.
All this is doing is giving us an extension so that we have time now to discuss moving forward with a formal...
Yeah, it's been dragged out. It's got to go, or move, or move forward.
So, anybody willing to make a motion to accept, to approve?
I'll make the motion to accept the zoning commission to add the new text to...
Thank you. Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Fuller?
Motion to take 1526 Strafford Avenue off the table, Madam Chair.
Holy cow.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, actually, that is, because we don't have Nichols Ave.
Yeah, we don't have it, so you're right. So please, go forward.
As I said, a motion to take Two Roads Brewery, 1526 Strafford Ave, off the road. I'll make this as a joint motion, both for the permit and for the site plan.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Giuliano. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Okay. Any thoughts?
Again, I think it's consistent to what they're doing right now. It's expansion, it's good. I'm inclined to support this, both the permit and the site plan.
Any other comment? Mr. Giuliano, Ms. Peppin, Mr. Raguskas?
I just like the fact that, you know, Jay mentioned that all along they've been working with him to make sure that they're doing everything right, so that makes this a lot easier.
It does. All right. Is somebody willing to make a motion to approve?
I'm going to make a motion to approve. 1526.
Both, yeah, you have to...
1526, Two Roads, special case, manufacturer of beer and brew pub facility, and approval of liquor location for a manufacturer of beer and brew pub facility in an MA slash CA district.
And I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cheers.
Chair votes yes, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and a drink to that. Okay, we're moving on to... Holly Lane is put off.
Wood End Road's cut off.
It's 3600 Main Street.
3600 Main, yeah, everybody else is...
They're at Ice Cream.
Yeah. 3600...
You should also just mention that Wood End is being continued.
Well, yeah, actually, just for the record, the text amendment for the HS Holly Lane, otherwise known as 99, has had a continuance. And one Wood End Road by Myra Carabera has also requested a continuance. So now we're down to 3600 Main Street.
Motion to take 3600 Main Street off the table by the Perdly family, also known as Paradise Cream, off the table.
I'll second.
Thank you very much for both of you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Okay.
Great idea.
Come on.
I just think maybe that we should stipulate that if things get a little crazy with papers and wrappers and stuff, that they're maybe, I don't know, can we do that?
Well, that actually falls under the health...
Yeah. I mean, I would think they sound like they're going to... They're not going to make their place look like, you know.
That and blight and litter ordinances.
Yeah.
There, there. Anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Raguskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on. I think that's it for our applications today. We're doing really good, thank you. Now, moving into our other work of our agenda, we have approval of minutes on January 31, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
By Ms. Peppin, is there a second?
I'll second that.
By Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. And number two, I have actually a couple of things here. Well, one thing. We have a discussion. Mr. Florick sent out, and I forwarded to everyone, his opinion on the attendance of community meetings. I just want to make sure that if there were any questions, that we had a chance to discuss it now.
This is consistent. When I was chairman, prior to a lot of you being on the board, I would often ask, what would be appropriate engagement of commissioners on things that were either at hearing or forthcoming to hearing? And it's really, I'm glad that the... And it's consistent to what previous opinions were in the past, so I'm very glad that new commissioners get to see that. It's very important that we protect our rights to vote on subjects, because once we take ourselves out, we're actually doing a disservice to our districts and to our town.
Yes. And Mr. Paul's not here, but the town attorney will look into and has made a recommendation about Mr. Paul recusing himself, but we'll address that when Mr. Paul is in attendance. Moving on to the CAM site plan review. I would suggest that that also is left on the table until we discuss and approve the application at our next administrative session. Is there any zoning enforcement study complaints?
No.
Accessory apartment applications?
No.
Sediment and erosion control applications?
No.
Planning projects, do you want to do a report or hold off?
We haven't really done much since last... They're in the... They're doing a final design phase for us, BSC, so that's in the works, so...
Perfect. Moving on to other items, we have three things to do. I know you only see two, but there is a third one. First one is the extension of 1498 North Avenue to expand the daycare, otherwise known as Honey Bear. The applicants are here to talk to that. And in fact, I'm going to give them the opportunity to come up and speak to it, would you please? Oh, I need to have a motion to allow the applicant to come up.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to waive the rules to allow a representative of 1498 North Avenue of the Honey Bear facility...
Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Yes, Mr. Florick.
Madam Chairman, I'm a little confused. Hasn't the public hearing been closed?
Yes, we're just asking for them to explain their extension. This is an extension application, not a public hearing. They're requesting an extension.
An extension of time limits?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for allowing us to speak tonight. I apologize, a little under the weather tonight, but I wanted to make sure we can get this accomplished tonight. Robert Rosati for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Vanaki, they own Honey Bear. I think the correspondence lays out the situation here. This is a special case approval that was previously granted. We're just maybe short of getting the building permit done in time within the 18 months that I think Attorney Florick and I had discussed that there is a time... uh, that there is, uh, a time limit to that. Uh, unfortunately, it, it was just a, um, uh, a snafu with the building permits signed, the builder is ready to go, we just need the zoning, uh, officer to sign that building permit. Uh, construction's gonna start next week if, uh, we can get everything in order. The big problem here is if we don't get this extension granted, so we can get the building permit signed off by zoning, uh, these people who are doing great works in town are gonna lose their state funding. And, uh, the whole project of, um, uh, that this board granted, and which is gonna do a great service to the town of Stratford, is, uh, is just gonna go by the wayside. Um, in fairness to, to the Vanekys, uh, there wasn't, um, a, a time period on the approval letter or on the recording. Um, there, there was no intent to, uh, circumvent this. Uh, there's a lot of red, red tape when you're dealing with the state of Connecticut. They have been unbelievably diligent in, uh, this project, uh, in trying to improve, uh, the lives of, of the young ones here in town. They, they are ready to go. Um, I, I think there are other applicants that have been here before, that have asked for much more severe, please, please help these people. I'll keep my mouth shut.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Uh, Mr. Rosati, um, so this is pretty much just because of the whole, whether it's from a construction side, or from the red tape of getting state and local building permits.
Exactly.
So you're just trying to keep everything all...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's...
These people have clean hair.
I need no more explanation. You're just trying to keep everything...
Exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
They've done everything in the spirit of this...
It's, sometimes it's just the logistics of, of the, what you're trying to do.
That's exactly right.
Any other questions? Mr. Giuliano, Ms. Peppin, Mr. Rukuskas?
What kind of an extension are we looking at here?
Uh, they would be offered an 18-month standard extension.
Standard extension.
Which they won't need.
They're starting next week, yeah, but they won't be able to get their permits unless they have this extension. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant or approve the, the extension, the 18-month extension for 1498 North Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next one that we have is to modify the approval of 1056 Stratford Avenue to allow a B.I., BYOB, bring your own booze, I guess, to a smoke shop and cigar lounge. I think that was in your packet. And they're requesting that, uh, we make a change in the regulation that was originally stipulated. Mr. Urbanski, you wanna talk to it?
Sure. Well, last time they came in for their, uh, their special case approval, uh, one of the stipulations was that no alcohol be permitted at the facility. Um, the zoning commission has the, um, authority to, um, doesn't have the authority to waive that tonight, that no alcohol. With the app, with the zoning commission, well, the zone, what, what I would recommend that the zoning commission do, uh, is encourage the applicant to come back and seek a modification of the original plan that was approved, um, and ask for, formally ask for whatever it is that, uh, BYOB.
Yeah, it's not a liquor permit, though. It's, it's, because we're not gonna sell it.
And there's no regulation on strictly bringing your own.
Right.
It's when it's selling, production, distribution, the actual financial side.
But, an application to actually formally remove the, to modify the, the existing approval that's in place. And, and the reason I suggest that is to uphold the integrity of the decision that was made by prior zoning commissioners.
Yeah. And that was, uh, I believe Commissioner Pepper and I were on the commission at that time. So what the original approval was, no alcohol to be served on site. I, I believe they're looking just for BYOB. I don't think they're looking for selling, production, or distribution. But I think it'd be goo, good if they actually were to address the board. I don't know if that triggers a public hearing, or if it's just an administrative review. I'm...
No, I think I would like to see them go to a public hearing, because if we're gonna lift the alcohol restrictions, for the same reason that you put the restriction on it, um, when they came before you, I think the public deserves an opportunity to hear the reasons why it should be lifted. I mean, I'd like to speed this through, but it's, there was a rationale when it was put on there initially, and I wasn't here. So I'd like to have that same opportunity given, to have it lifted.
Is this shop across from the, um, Keating?
Correct. That's, that's the one I believe. I forget what it's called.
What is, what's, what's, uh, in there? There's a, um...
It's a, it's a Chinese food place.
No, 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 but it's a Chinese food place.
Yeah, it's a Turkish food place. Yeah, I, I, I know the facility well. And they're asking for a change, and it also gives the applicant a chance to demonstrate that they haven't had any issues, which may have been one of the reasons that the alcohol restriction was put on it initially.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, there's really no action to take. Let's see if they come to public hearing or not.
So we're asking that, that, well, there is, there, there is an action, that we're making a recommendation that they resubmit with a full application to come before, to lift those restrictions. That would be the motion, actually, if somebody would like to make the motion. Okay, don't jump up and down.
I'll make...
So it's a modification, a modification of the original conditions of approval?
Right.
For the facility?
For a full application, which includes a public hearing.
Correct.
That, uh, that, uh, motion was made by Ms. Peppin, is that okay?
Yep.
Second by Mr. Rukuskas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Okay, the third thing that we have, and I think this might be the end for the evening, we're doing really good, is you received a resolution in support of funding to review the regulations of, the zoning regulations. And this time, it was included in your packet. It has already been presented to the planning commission and approved and supported. They are, this was intended to be a joint resolution from both land use boards urging the town to consider including funding, so that we could look at revising the zoning regulations to bring them up to date, because we haven't done that in a while. And there were several methodologies of how the town might wanna consider proceeding with that. It is just a recommendation, but coming from both land use boards, and it would require a vote from us. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to read it.
Uh, it's, I have a hard time supporting this, not in concept, but in process. Uh, the zoning commission usually doesn't make funding requests. I've never heard of a time where it has. Uh, as individual members, I think it's, it's fair to do that. I, I just feel like, I, as a commissioner, wearing the commissioner hat, I'd be able to step in my authority in making this request.
Anybody else? I'll give you one response. There isn't any other body that looks at the zoning regulations who would make the request, because we're the only body that actually reviews zoning regulations. Um, it would not come from the town council, because they would not have the purview or the authority to look at it. It wouldn't come from, uh, any other body. So it really would fall upon us to make that recommendation. Um, and if we don't, then the zoning regulations would not be updated, and no one would know that there would be a need for the zoning regulations to be updated. Unfortunately, to do so requires a cost, either to hire a consultant, or to hire a planner, or there are several combinations of the above. And it's really incumbent upon us to make that recommendation, and to urge the coun, the council to consider the cost that's involved in it. Not much different than what you would do with a charter revision, in fact.
But that's why we have planning and zoning staff. That's why we have a planning and zoning commission. That's why we have an economic development commission. That's why we have a mayor. That's why we have a town council. That's why we have an RDA, redevelopment agency. Um, they all, the, the P.O.C.D., the Plan of Conservation and Development focuses a lot on that. And it's not true that zoning is the only agency that looks at zoning commissions. Planning is integral in any amendment to the zoning regulation. Uh, Commissioner Peppin could speak to that. She's served on planning. We have text amendments that come from planning commission. I am not against the idea of should or should not the town have a town planner or a consultant to look at P.O.C., enhanced, P.O.C.D. enhancement, compliance, recommendations, therefore, but, um, unless we're also requesting a, we're asking $170,000 when the mill rate's gonna go up over 40. I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's why I'm having a hard time with this. It's like, we, we even need to show or demonstrate to make this a very solid funding request, of either revenues that could come into town, or some sort of other offsetting cut to make this, because, let's face it, 40 mill rates, disgusting.
Uh, I do need to make a correction to the statement. I did mean that it was planning and zoning, and that's why this is a joint resolution. Um, and that's why it was written jointly by Mr. Solavi and myself, of which it already went through the planning commission and approved, and was approved. So this would require our approval for it to move forward. I do think that it is on us to give an estimate of what we think it would cost. I believe that the town council has the fiduciary responsibility and the decision to decide if they feel that it is in the best interest of the town to look at funding, uh, an update of our zoning regulations. If they choose not to, they would deny the request and not put it in, or they may put it in, in years in the future where they feel that there would be more appropriate mill rates. But it does give us the opportunity to alert them with some idea of what the cost might be, of what needs to happen. It's a recommendation.
Do, do we have any sense of, of money that could come into the town, whether it's fees, enhancement of property values, something that, that shows the bang for the buck?
We might be a cost avoidance, from what I understand. We might find ourselves avoiding more litigation, because we've updated our regulations. Uh, and we may have the opportunity, yes, to, with the professional help that we would receive, adjust our regulations to be more fitting and compliant with what other towns are doing, so we don't find ourselves in these issues of TOD, and maybe some of the other issues that we've come across with. For example, tonight, not having enough units, and people are circumventing it because they're going to 830Gs. There's a number of things. I would not necessarily guarantee that there would be a cost savings from this, no more than when the Board of Ed says that they want, they need to have their education standards upgraded, and there's a cost associated. It's really up to the town council to decide if they feel that our zoning regulations are worthy enough to be updated and to be in com, in consistency with our neighboring towns. I believe it's an economic development impact if we don't. And I, we haven't done, when's the last time we've updated our regulations?
That's what the text amendment is.
A full review of our zoning regulations.
That's what the Plan of Conservation and Development is.
1956?
1956.
You don't update the regulations all at once. You take it section by section.
That's what this requires, is that we start that process, and there's a funding and amount to it.
Again, that's the P.O.C.D. Again, that's how, that's our goal setting, right here. It's right here on the agenda.
But that, this is, it needs, this is in compliance with the P.O.C.D. It still requires a funding component and the agreement of both commissions. So we're not saying anything different. We're, that's exactly what it says.
I think what Commissioner Phillips is, is saying, and maybe I'm wrong, for land use and zoning and the Plan of Conservation and Development, the number one priority is a re, complete revision of the zoning regulations. I think that's what she's saying.
Yes.
And that's, that was the intent of the, the resolution, was to get not necessarily commitment, but, you know, to gauge exactly how the town feels about implementing some of the prioritized objectives in the P.O.C.D.
Then I understand why there's a more specific dollar amount attached to it. $170,000 ballpark is, um, shouldn't the resolution just saying that the town should invest more resources into P.O.C.D. enhancement and compliance, and, and amendment as need be, and to have all departments that are touch such matters be involved with it? I'd also encourage, if you're making that recommendation, to also recommend an ordinance to the town council to, to legislate and compel it. Uh, I, I just feel uncomfortable asking a specific dollar amount when we don't have a system of metrics to use, because the more you could do that, the better, the easier it is for a town council, or for a mayor, to make, either for a mayor to make that request, or a town council to ratify that request. And, and with, with all the spending in this town, and both sides are doing it, um, I don't wanna live in a town with a 40 mill rate.
The town council does have the option of looking at other expenditures to offset it.
Then I think it'd be, would be very helpful for us to recommend to them either money that comes in, or money that could be saved because of this.
Where would you, how would you like to phrase that, Mr. Fuller?
Well, you're the, you're the guy who's creating the resolution. I'm not in favor of this. Show me. Prove me. Uh, make me vote yes.
Okay. Well, I think that kinda says it. Uh, Mr. Giuliano, how do you feel?
Yeah, in my little mind, I mean, uh, the dollar amount kinda gets stuck in my throat. So I understand that we've been without a planning and town planner for the last five years, or it's saying here. Um, I, and then the other thing that's stuck in my head is, I listen, and there's other people here. I mean, there's money there, and they get good money, and are they just all doing what they're doing? I mean, I'm not here to torpedo anybody, but are all these agencies we have in this building doing? I hear, you know, either way they go, but it, it's, it's a tough sw, pill to swallow, I'm telling you. I mean, you know, I mean, is EC doing what they're doing? Is, uh, I, I see in all our reports, everybody there, Christina and everybody else, they're all out there, but, I mean, is it enough? I mean, Jay's doing all he can. He's jammed here. I understand that, but, boy, especially after the mill rate, and now the Board of Ed wants another. How much? There, there's the, uh, never mind.
No?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I understand where you're coming from, but, boy, I, I'm just having a hard time swallowing it.
It's, my opposition's not so much, whether, me, Dave Fuller, private citizen of Stratford, Connecticut, it says there should be more funding or more resources for town planning. It's the fact that zoning commission usually doesn't make funding requests, so when we do, we better have everything buttoned up. We better know what we're requesting, showing we're offsetting. We can't just be asking for money about some sort of, you know, revenue, or some sort of cost saving, something to be as revenue neutral or as revenue beneficial as possible.
Well, we would still need to have the request for our consultant to do that kind of study, because all we have is the knowledge that if our, knowing that our regulations have not been updated since 1956, other than for text amendments here and there, they have not had a full review. We are missing out on opportunities for economic development. We are holding our town back. What that amount means could be a lot more than $175,000, or it could be less. Um, you look at the projects that we have here, and the time and the expense of litigation that we have, far exceeds the $175,000, because of the fact that we are always negotiating whether or not our regulations are consistent with our neighboring towns. I, I think it's an opportunity missed if we don't proceed forward.
And do you know what that dollar amount is, on the litigation side?
Of how much we spent during our last lit, set of litigations?
Yeah, specifically just zoning and BZA-specific litigation.
Mr. Florick, do you have a ballpark number of how much we've spent?
No, I wouldn't be able to get that. I mean, I, I can get that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that information tonight. But we do track, um, litigation costs in the town attorney's office.
Do you think it's more than $175,000?
And are we talking about the last fiscal year?
That's, that's a good base number to use. Well, use a fiscal year of the last year or the previous year, something that's recent.
What, what's the time for, is it, is it a fiscal year? $175,000 to defend zoning, I would think, would be a little high.
I would've thought it was even more.
Yeah, I thought it was...
I would think it would be. I think $175,000 would be high. Now, the one thing that skewers that is the affordable housing, um, applications, because the town itself mounts a, a defense to those. Um, for example, if, if one of the, if, if, uh, an appeal was
For example, if, if one of the, if, if an appeal was taken from an action that you took tonight, we would defend the zoning commission. But on an affordable housing petition, not only would we defend the zoning petition, or commission, not only would I defend the zoning commission, but another attorney who has been retained by the town to, to oppose the affordable housing application and who has given presentations at the public hearings, has hired experts, all of that increases the, the, the cost. So if, if, if the question is purely for defense, no, I don't think it approaches $175,000 in a fiscal year. If you add in not me defending the zoning commission, but other attorneys representing the town and getting paid out of the town attorney's budget and presenting experts, if all of that is added in, then it could very well exceed $175,000.
Is it true that I, and this is my understanding, one of the reasons why we have a higher application, number of applications for an 830G is because the town in Stratford has exhausted all of its units for residential housing?
I'm, I'm not sure of that, Madam Chairman. I, I think that we get a, a, a significant number of applications under 8-30G because of the statutory scheme that's set up, the burden of proof is shifted on an 8-30G application. Normally, the, the applicant bears the burden of proof that the zoning commission's decision was arbitrary and capricious or unlawful for another reason. But in 8-30G, it's the other way. It's the zoning commission that has the burden. So I think that there's perception out there amongst certain developers that it's an easier and more obtainable goal under 8-30G than it may be under any, any other scenario.
I can comment on that as well. It's, it's, you're, it's my belief that you're correct, that based, because of the way the zoning regulations that are unique to Stratford with the bedroom equivalents, in combination with the policy for 8-30G, 30G, we do experience a higher volume of affordable housing because there's no other option to build a project of apartments, eight units or more, anywhere in town. There are no equivalents. The only way you can do it is, is the way Mr. Knott came in with 55 Washington Parkway and kind of tweaked the interpretation of the regulations. Since there's no other way to build something not like nine units anywhere in Stratford, anywhere, the only other option to do that is through affordable housing.
This would be one of the examples that I would say that a review of our zoning regulations would be beneficial. There are others, such as the marijuana and the motorium that we now exist. Mr. Fuller's been so gracious to do most of the research on his own time for free, but it does not afford us the ability necessarily to engage with going to other towns, looking at regulations and updating our regulations with other towns. We might be losing on, losing out on opportunities that we could take better advantage of. Without having that funding to hire a planner or a consultant, those responsibilities fall on us personally to do it as volunteers. And this resolution was really born out of the fact that for us to move forward on a number of our goals and to look at things to move this town forward, a review of our regulations was needed. And it is consistent with the expectations laid out with the Plan of Conservation.
This sort of may be a dumb question, but are there monies out there that, that we can gather up to, to help us do this?
I don't know about townwide. I, I can only tell you that I'm diligently searching for grant money to help either pay for something like this completely or to support.
Support.
Yeah, like an 80, 80, 20 split where a grant will fund 80% of the rewrite of the zoning regulations and the town will have to put up 20%, or something like that.
Yeah.
I do remind you, this is a request, it's a recommendation. The town council could receive this, the mayor could receive this and certainly ignore it, or put it into the later years, recognize that there's a need, adjust the amount. But it does alert that there is support that we should look at it. Mr. Raguskas?
I think I'm just looking at this a little bit differently than maybe Commissioner Fuller and Commissioner Giuliano are. I mean, we, the zoning commission cannot spend money. We don't have anything like that. But I'm reading here that three years ago, the POCD estimated these costs and obviously called for this to happen and nothing's happened. So we're basically just getting together with the Planning Commission to tell the town council these things need to get going. As far as things that would bring money back into the town, I mean, I do think that if we develop design guidelines for Barnum Avenue and Main Street and other neighborhood developments, that that's going to bring money into the town. And again, it is, it's just a request. It's basically saying, you guys haven't done this, might be time. And they don't have to do anything. They can ignore it.
That's exactly correct. But it is consistent with what the Plan of Conservation has requested. We just haven't done it.
But that comes from that, even that funding was generated by the administration and the town council. Sure, maybe with some feedback from land use boards on where to go with it in terms of operations, but not in terms of, you know, funding requests per se. Planning and zoning is just a piece of it. Remember, POCD, it's not just a planning and zoning document. It's a legislative document. It's a economic development document. It's a beautification document. It's a conservation document. It's ultimately, it's silly, it's in the name. It's the plan for the town. This is what Stratford is. So it's not just the land use boards. I'm, yeah, I would agree that the Planning and Zoning Office is underfunded, just like the IT department in this town's underfunded. My goodness, we still use cassette recorders for town meetings. They don't make those anymore. And it's cheaper to go with MP3s. Go with Staples and pick up what, what Gail DeCilio has here and just use those. But for us, you know, for us as individuals, we should make that request. But for, as a commission, that's not, zoning commissions don't make funding requests.
I, I guess that the last statement is, I, I just disagree. I think we do, like any other department, any other commission, and other commissions do make requests for resources. And this is a request for resources that could be fulfilled, as you see written, in a number of different ways. One of the ways is with a town planner. Other ways, we could bring in a consultant. It may be a combination of the two. That decision is left to the administration. But we are detailing in this the need to have our zoning code to be reviewed. And it's our call to say whether or not we feel that should be appropriate. And urge the administration, this would go to the administration and the town council. And they can accept this request, they could ignore this request. But we would have done our due diligence to remind them that this is a responsibility that the town should engage in and maybe an opportunity that they're missing. I think it's proactive and I don't think it's outside our purview, Mr. Fuller.
And we're going back, you're saying 1956 are, our regulations are, and have to be up. Has anybody floated here? Has anybody got any ideas of, I mean, a counselor or an attorney or a person or anything to be this?
I'm not sure if I understood the question.
It's just hard to fathom. I mean, we've gone all this way like this and nobody's gotten it through. I mean, we're just still 1956.
I don't think it's ever been brought up and maybe this is just a change of thinking. And that's one of the things I think we're doing better than others before us. And maybe things of time has changed enough, not taking anything away from previous commissions, but things have changed enough that it's time to review where you're at.
And you're saying, you know, like from other towns, they can get some other ideas? Is there a template? Is there in a template, anything with the state that upgrades these that you could go by or it's just?
You mean the zoning regulations?
Yeah.
No. Everything's done local, everything's done locally and tailored, tailored locally. And I, I think regardless of what dollar amount or any dollar, if you even want to ask for a dollar amount, the idea is everyone here has expectations as to what type of development the town should have. Currently, we are taking development applications that are tailored for 1956. If you've, I, I, I don't feel that that's a reasonable, it's unreasonable for the zoning commission or any board to, to expect a different type of development unless we are encouraging it or requiring it in the zoning regulations. I think that's, that's the simplest way that I, I can rationalize it from my perspective.
So you want to try to straighten this out and hopefully we don't go into the bed that we are with the TOD?
It's one way of looking at it.
Because, you know, you look at that and you go, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll stay with 1956.
Well, we're doing this piecemeal.
It's due to text. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm, I'm working with you.
Your, your point is well taken. We are doing this piecemeal. That's exactly what we're doing, text amendment by text amendment.
So what are you looking for? A motion to move this forward, to make?
A motion to?
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going, because I, I'm sure there's a little bit more discussion, but you're looking for a motion to move this forward to get a town planner?
Well, that would be one of the options. There are, as you see, a couple of approaches that is left up to the administration. The motion would be to accept the resolution to move it forward with a favorable recommendation from the zoning commission in support of the planning, well, not in support, consistent with the planning commission to the town council and the mayor. As you can remember, the planning commission has already approved this to move forward with a favorable recommendation. This has now come to us. In the history of this is Mr. Solhavy and I got together, we've been working together, and put this together. Mr. Solhavy wrote a good portion of it and then Mr. Hibansky went through it and put it into the language that it needed to be. We have talked to a number of people who are very favorable to this, but it does need the support of the land use boards. And it's really us to decide if we think it's important.
And then it'll go up in front of council, you're saying?
It just gets submitted to the town council and it's a recommendation for inclusion in the budget.
For the next year fiscal year, whatever budget they approve in May?
It's a, it's in the preparation of the 2017 or 2018. That's what we would like. They could choose to put it in different years.
And who will explain that to the council? I mean, not being a, not being smart here or whatever, I mean, they will get a piece of paper and everything, somebody will be up in front to say?
Mr. Solhavy and myself.
Will do that, yeah. That's, I'm not trying to be smart or anything.
No.
Just saying because it's.
It's a fair question.
It's a, it's a, I know you, it's great intentions.
It's Mr. Solhavy and I together jointly explaining and educating our council members. The mayor has already heard a good portion of this, why we think updating our zoning codes would be beneficial to the town.
Whatever departments are going to look at this? I mean, there's other departments that are affected by zoning codes, conservation, economic development. It's, I'm, I'm worried because there's specific dollar amounts, specific town planner this, consultant that. I'm okay with a more just general focused, hey, we need resources to either revise, enhance, repeal, or improve land use policy. But it, it's getting so specific, there's a reason for that specificity and I don't think it's transparent.
Well, it actually could be more or less, but these are numbers that came out of the 2014.
Yeah. And this, that's three years ago.
And that was the number that was recommended to us by the consultants who did the Plan of Conservation at that time.
And it doesn't seem that specific, 125,000 to 170,000, and it's an estimate that's in a report that was issued three years ago. So it, it's not something that was pulled out of thin air.
Yeah.
Could that dollar, I'm, could that dollar amount be recalculated to be, oh, Attorney Florrick was saying, you know, the 170 is high. I mean, could, to propose this, I mean, if you came up in front of me just saying, like it was 100 or something, I mean, maybe it might because now if you have to go and forward with council with this 170 and do we, I'm just saying, can we get more down on the number or will you break it down?
It could be. Also understand that that's a general estimate, which could be, that could be done through a number of different means. One would be a town planner that we used to have. And a town planner would then be able to do some of this review, also to be able to look at a better number and update it. But at this point, we do not have any guidance to get a better number until we do the next Plan of Conservation.
That's when I look at it.
Yeah, I guess because everything else we do is always figured high. And I won't go there, but I see where you're coming from.
So what do we have to do, just to prove this going to?
Would you like me to make a motion and I'll read the bottom line?
Yes.
I'm gonna do that, okay, Commissioner Fuller?
That's all you want?
Just, all right, I'm gonna make a motion, be it further resolved jointly by the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission, that we stand ready to meet with the mayor and town council to provide any documentation, testimony, or information that would further the approval of the above request.
And also read the top, the title.
Resolution in support of funding for implementation of the town of Stratford, Town of Stratford's Plan of Conservation and Development.
As submitted.
As submitted.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Giuliano, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion passes four one. Thank you very much. I am gonna make a recommendation based on what our earlier conversation that we postponed our goal setting. Ms. Peppin, you have a thought?
I just have a one thought, one quick question. Jay, all this, what do we do with all this? I have boxes at home.
I do too.
I mean, is there a shredder that we could bring it to? Is there, I mean, what do we?
Mind someone with a wood burning stove, maybe?
No, 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 I'm, I'm curious. I mean, do, do we find out what we do with all this?
You can throw it away. You put it in a recycling bin. It's all public, public information, you know, there's nothing sensitive in these documents.
Sometimes I give them away to the neighbors who they're involved in, just so that they had it for their records. But most of the time I throw in the recycling.
Yeah. It's a balance between making sure it's convenient for all you. You all used to have to come into the zoning office to look at plans, which I didn't think was convenient for commissioners and waste paper, but I feel like this method has always worked the best.
Some things I think, I think I'll try.
Yeah. If it works in 1956.
Hell, the charter's 1639.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you by Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Giuliano, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. You all have been wonderful tonight. Thank you very much.
I need a motion to, uh?
We adjourn.
Oh, oh, you just did that. Oh, right, right. Okay, oh, Peppin.